My guest today is Brian Para. Brian is a current Grand Prairie ISD School Board trustee representing Place Two and is also an elementary assistant principal in D I S D. Brian grew up on the East Coast but moved to Texas in 2003, graduating from South Grand Prairie High School in 2005. He went on to get his bachelor's degree from Texas A&amp;M University and his master's in educational leadership from DBU. Brian is a very involved community leader and volunteer. He works closely with the League of United Latin American Citizens, or LULAC. He is a member of the Grand Prairie Host Lions Club and the North Texas Region Omega Delta Phi Alumni Association, among many others. Today, Brian and I talk about not only being a school board trustee, but also an administrator during the COVID-19 pandemic. We discuss the importance of kids getting back into school and the obstacles some of these students in our district are facing during online learning, including those in our Hispanic community. Brian is always such a nice person to talk to, and I'm glad that even though he's right in the thick of getting ready for the school year, he had time to talk to me. Here is Brian Para.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brian Para. I am a current second-year system principal. I've spent a total of seven years in education. My first job after I graduated from Texas A&amp;M was actually as a substitute teacher for Grand Prairie Independent School District. And it was during that time that I realized that I love being in the classroom and impacting students. And that's when I decided to make the move to pursue an alternative certification. And now I would spend the next five years as a middle school social studies teacher.
So what was your degree in before?
University Studies. So race, gender, ethnicity, with a minor in Spanish and geography. Most people ask me, "What is university studies?" At the time, it was almost like a glorified sociology degree. Create your own degree plan. And I ended up choosing that because at the time, I didn't know what I wanted to do. I struggled a little bit trying to find a pathway and tying the fact that I had to pick a major, and that took me down a specific career path because I didn't know what I didn't... Even as I was going through college, I didn't know what I wanted to do.
Isn't that the case for so many of us? We just don't know what to do.
Without a doubt, without a doubt.
Now, you didn't grow up in Texas, though, did you? You came from where?
New York. I actually moved... I moved to... I went from New York City, Queens, New York, to Grand Prairie, Texas in 2003.
So you moved from the small town to the big time.
Let me tell you, that was the biggest culture change that I have ever experienced.
Wow. That would be so crazy. Like, I've had a friend of mine that moved from Grand Prairie to New York, but I've never seen anybody come the opposite direction. But you were telling me a little bit... I think when you came and you started doing student teaching, didn't you start teaching Texas history?
My first job, when I became a teacher, was a Texas history, as a teacher.
I think I asked you, "Does New York have a New York history, or is that something that just Texas loves to have?"
I think that New York is one of the few states that does teach its own state history. But let me tell you, in the state of Texas, or in the Republic of Texas, let me tell you, we take our history very seriously.
So then, I guess, I'm assuming along the way, you had to get a master's degree because you're an assistant principal? Or did you have to get a master's degree?
I knew, my first day as a teacher, I knew at that very moment, I was jealous of my students because they were taking in knowledge and receiving information, and I was the one presenting it. And I knew that at that point, I wanted to go back. I just didn't know when that was gonna be. So two, three years into my teaching career, that's when I started going to classes. So I would work in the morning, and then in the evenings, I would drive about 15 minutes down the road to Dallas Baptist University.
Oh, cool. So you graduated from DBU with your... Did you get... Is it education, a master's in education, or secondary education?
Master's in educational leadership.
Oh, wow. And then, so how soon after that did you start to go into administration?
I... Let's see. I think I completed my degree in 2018. I spent one more year teaching. I taught for five years. And at that point, that's when I started searching and applying for assistant principal positions all over, I would say, what felt like the entire North Texas area.
And so you ended up at Dallas ISD, right? That's where you're at right now, teaching?
Yes, ma'am. Martha Turner Elementary.
Wow. So you guys are getting ready for all that. And then, at this... And then you also decided that you were gonna run for school board and do that at the same time. But you're in GPISD running on school board, new this year.
Yes.
So what place are you in?
Place Two.
Place Two. Wow, you picked a good year.
Oh, let me... Yeah, it's been... Just for anyone that decided to run in 2020, it has been a crazy election cycle, for sure. I have a lot of friends that their races have been postponed to November, which has required... So you go from filing in January to planning four months of hardcore campaigning, and then back even further. So I can't imagine how much work they've had to put in because now they've campaigned an entire year.
Right.
And you have to find innovative ways to remain engaged with the community at large.
Well, not only does it cost money, but it's very time-consuming to run for... People don't realize, and I've interviewed, you know, and I have friends that are local elected officials. This is... Running for any type of political office, even when it's just for your own town, is expensive, and it requires a tremendous amount of energy and time that it takes. I don't think people realize just how much it is to do something like that, just to run for office. And then also be in office. But, you know, it's expensive even running for local elections, too.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah. So you're kind of... You've got an interesting perspective because not only are you on a school board, but you're also in a position of administration with an actual school. So you have the experience of being an active educator as you're also on a school board, which I would assume in a year like this would come in very, very handy because you have two different perspectives of how things are going. So like, I don't know if you can kind of talk a little bit about, has that helped you make decisions? And how's that gone into your decision-making process?
It definitely allows me to bring in a perspective to the board. As the only administrator, I know one of my fellow board members was formerly an educator as well. But just having that background experience as a teacher and now as a second-year administrator, I... It's almost like we... I have that firsthand knowledge of what teachers are feeling, experiencing, just those concerns. Because I am on a campus every single day. I have campus since July 20th. A lot of the concerns that people are facing, that the questions that we're wondering every single day, is it safe enough? I can tell you that there are people on campus that have been on campus all summer long, preparing everything for our students, for a safe return for our students and for our teachers. I never imagined that I would be in a situation where the decisions that we make as a board can impact people's lives, almost in a life or death situation.
It's interesting because I'm the daughter... My dad was an assistant principal for years, and my mom was an elementary school educator. And I just couldn't help but think, because knowing that my dad, you know, did not have as much time off as teachers do during the summertime. I knew that there had been... I'd assumed that there had been, you know, janitorial staff and administrators and secretaries up at all schools during the summer. And, you know, having been there. And I think that when you're there during the summertime and you're preparing and you're kind of there and you're at the actual campus, it gives you the ability to get kind of more comfortable with what y'all are doing. And I think teachers, part of the fear that they've had with going back is the unknown. Like, what is it gonna look like? How is it gonna be like? And you being there that long has probably helped a little bit alleviate some of those fears and kind of getting teachers back. So when did y'all go back? When did everybody go back to campus? I know this kids haven't, but when did the other teachers come back?
Our teachers actually haven't returned yet.
Oh, really?
They come back this Thursday.
This Thursday. But GPISD has already gone back, but Dallas ISD. And did I just hear that this Hinojosa was gonna wait to postpone to start?
So with Dallas ISD, they... Earlier this summer, they decided to push back the start of school to after Labor Day. The big decision that came last week from Dallas ISD was that for the first four weeks, it was going to be 100% virtual.
Wow. So how do you feel about that? How are y'all feeling about that?
I know that Dr. Hinojosa is 100% acting with people's lives in mind. The most surest and safest option with looking at the numbers currently in the city of Dallas, I know that without a doubt, he has kept teachers' safety, student's safety, staff's safety 100% in mind.
Yeah. So you're... With you being at an elementary school campus, I know things are a little bit different when we're talking about online for like high school and middle school, and then talking about online for like some of the littler kids, especially those that are starting kindergarten in first grade. So like, I don't know. That's just something that I'm really curious about is, how do you feel like... How are you going to... How are the teachers gonna engage kids that are that little, that haven't really had a whole lot of experience with school before?
I'm gonna tell you this. One thing that has shocked me is how technologically savvy young children are. You would think that it would be hard for them to catch up, but there is a learning curve. But children today have been exposed to technology that we, as children, were never exposed to. So they catch on very quickly. This is the technology generation right here. So they're learning new technologies. They catch on. Like, I've seen kids as early as four or five on computers just navigating with complete and total ease. So I think there will definitely be a learning curve. I think that patience is gonna be required from our teachers, from our parents. But I think eventually, I think that this generation of students, I think they're definitely ready to answer the challenge, for sure.
Yeah, it's interesting, especially when you think about like, these kids that are starting kindergarten that really have never been in it... Well, some of them might have been in like a preschool classroom, but not all of them have been in a classroom environment. And there is a little bit of a change between, okay, we're gonna watch TV on a tablet or participate in games, and then also sit and listen to a teacher. And I'm sure that those kindergarten teachers are just waiting to get their hands on those kids. They just love them and see their faces and, you know... I'm glad that we have the ability to adapt and to do what we need to do during this time. But, you know, there's just nothing that can really substitute for being there with kids. And I know that, you know, that's what we're all hoping to get towards, I'm sure, you know, in the near future. But how has this like affected some of the kids? How do you think it's affected some of your kids, even in GPISD, Dallas, like that maybe haven't had the ability to utilize technology as much? Or maybe are starting from a, you know... That maybe haven't ever been in like a school environment before. How is this affecting some of them?
I think that it may be a little bit more difficult for those who've been exposed to that technology, especially the little ones, pre-K, kindergarten, who haven't quite learned to interact socially with much larger groups of students. So I think that obviously, you hit it right on the money when you said that the best thing for our students is for them to be back in the classroom. It'll definitely be a learning curve. And I'm hoping that numbers will... That we'll start to see the numbers start to dwindle down because I think everyone's ready to be back in the classroom. And I think the best thing for our students is to be in the classroom.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Avery, my daughter's gonna go back as soon as we have the okay. Like, and especially, I just remember when she was in kindergarten, in first grade especially, watching a child even hold a pencil. Like, when you're trying to teach him how to handwrite, when you're trying to teach him how to write, there's just no substitute for actually being there and showing them how to cut, how you glue, what does a book look like? Like, I just remember I substituted in some of her kindergarten classes. Like, this is a spine. This is how, you know... There's all these things that you kind of have to have a hands-on, especially for the little kids. And I know that that's just... There's just no substitute for that feeling. And kindergarten and first grade, especially, especially kindergarten teachers, are just so loving in the way that they are with the kids. You just... You can't do that through technology. So I know that they're just probably itching to be back with them.
Definitely. And I know it's gonna require everybody's part, from parents to teachers. I know parents are gonna have to play a greater part in the child's education, just being able to... You're right, those motory skills, learning those in pre-K and kindergarten, those are crucial foundations. And there is no substitute for that.
Right. So what are you seeing? Like, you know, some of the kids that maybe ended the last year, maybe they were in a preschool setting, or, you know, that they didn't have a chance to kind of start this year off. How... When it goes into your decision-making process, like, and we'll talk about, you know... I guess... Well, I guess, first of all, how much decision-making did you get as an administrator with what you are gonna do at the school? And then how much, you know, as a school district, you know, elected official? Maybe talk about like, how much power did you have in the decision-making process of how school is gonna start versus the state? You know, that kind of thing, maybe a little bit. I think people need to kind of hear, how much control do y'all have over that and how you do it?
Oh, it's very... It's all explained in two parts. So as an administrator, as an assistant principal, I would say that I, or as administrators, we didn't have much part in that decision-making process. That's more at the administration building. That is a superintendent decision, and everything after that comes... And a superintendent and a board decision that just makes its way down. As an administrator, as an AP, my job is to make sure that we follow those orders and that we implement all the safety measures that are required on us. Now, on the flip side, as a board member, we're having conversations with the superintendent, Ms. Ellis. We're carefully looking at data, at the numbers, as specifically Dallas County and Grand Prairie, in Dallas County. And we get... We have some input in just the recommendations that we're making.
And y'all have... And Grand Prairie is a little bit, you know, unique in terms of the counties that you're in because there... Now, how many schools in Grand Prairie ISD are actually in a different county than Dallas? Do we have any?
We do not. All our schools are all in Dallas County.
Okay, so that makes it a little bit easier. But Dallas County and Tarrant County have handled this two completely different ways, obviously, if you're following the news at all, which everybody is. But, yeah, so when y'all started kind of talking about this, how much... When I'm watching people comment and I'm watching people talk about decisions when it comes to school, when you're in the middle of something like this, you're kind of having to make split-second decisions that are... You don't have a whole lot of time, and you really don't know what a month from now or a month and a half from now is gonna look like. How are y'all doing that? I just can only imagine.
I wish that more people understood how flexible and how much our teachers are required to adapt to every single moment. You're right. Decisions change day to day, hour by hour. In our last school board meeting, our July school board meeting, we literally found out 30 minutes before we were... We were ready to present the option that we were going with and how we were gonna start school. But 30 minutes before we opened up the meeting, we found out that the county commissioner had implemented a health order, and now no schools for Labor Day in person. So scratch that. You just have to have... I think Grand Prairie ISD has done an amazing job of just being prepared for the unexpected. And whatever decisions our county commissioner is making, whatever decisions are coming from the governor's office, you always have to have backup options just to be ready to implement. And sometimes, it may not be the answer that people are hearing, but I think that our district has done an amazing job just keeping up with these orders that are being pushed down from our officials, elected officials.
I mean, absolutely. Like, as a parent, you know, we just got... My daughter goes to a charter school outside of Grand Prairie, but it's in Dallas. And so we just got an email, and it was like, hey, you know, the county commissioner said, this is what he suggested. Now, it's not a mandate that they start at the end of September. And I knew that Dallas ISD had decided to. But it was like, parents, what do y'all want to do? Do y'all want to go ahead and get started in person on September the 8th, like we were planning? Or do y'all want to go ahead and do the end? And it's just like, these decisions are just happening at a moment's notice. So it's almost like, we know that school's starting. We know that it will start in some way. But as parents, we're just having to be so flexible. What kind of pressure is this putting on parents that maybe don't have the work flexibility and some of the options that other parents do when it comes to online learning?
It is putting so much pressure on parents. And sometimes, it hurts me just to hear some of the stories. I have had a community member reach out and say that they want nothing but school to open, that they have three, four, five kids, and it's very difficult if, let's say, we're dealing with a single-parent household. What does that now look like for that parent? They have... They literally have to decide between going to work or staying at home and taking care of the kids. And what happens when we have parents that have very young kids that can't stay home by themselves? So there are so many decisions. There are so many scenarios that are playing out. But definitely, a lot of our parents are saying that they need school to be open because they have no other option.
And it's true. And, you know, it's like, when you start to get into... I don't... I think people are starting to see just how much of a delicate balance our society is when it comes to summer programs. This is when they end, this is when they start. And it's, you know, a lot of them are operating on a budget themselves. So it's like, when you delay one thing, and then you have two weeks, or three weeks, or a month, or something where you don't have daycare ability, but school's not gonna start till here. And everybody's trying to kind of make decisions. Like, I have seen so much from just parents that even I know and people that I know where it's like, do we open for... Do we stay open for an extra month that we can allow for kids to have a place to go? What, you know? And it's just, there's so much that's just so specific to how we've always done things, and this disrupted all of that. And it's just crazy how we're all having to kind of be flexible. Thank goodness employers are being as flexible as they can be, but I know not all of them are. But, you know, even just the daycares that didn't make it through the summer or didn't reopen, you know? Now, where do those kids go? And it's just crazy.
I think as a society, as a community, we've definitely had to pull together from food servers to camp to schools that are truly the heart of the community. I almost feel like everything else is based off of that, what the decision that schools are making. It definitely is gonna require a lot of grace and a lot of patience from everybody, truly, to be able to help one another, especially out in the community. I know that any programs that are out there, I definitely try to push out. And I know that our community has done an amazing job just volunteering itself to helping out our fellow neighbor in this time of need.
Yep. And I have a feeling, just like I did, like, when my lease was up at the end of May, I ended up moving back in with my parents because, just for a little while, because I'm like, I don't know if school's gonna start in the fall. I don't know what I'm gonna be doing. So it's like, I needed that extra help. And I just looked into having, you know, retired educators as parents that don't have anything to do that can help me. But not everybody's in that same boat that I am. But the multi-generational living, this is kind of where that comes in handy, where you have a bunch of adults living in a house with kids. This is where it really becomes very, you know, helpful for the kids as you have a bunch of options that don't just rely on one person. But single-parent households... I have a friend of mine, she's got three kids. Two of them are in school, one of them will be in school in two years. And it's just been... It's just, it's hard to do all that. Plus, you don't even have enough devices for the kids, not that old-fashioned program for school, you know? How did y'all do that? How did y'all handle the device situation?
I think that two months ago, for one of our... At one of our board meetings, we had decided to... The board had approved a complete... As a district, we are completely one-to-one technology ratio. And that was a 7-0 decision by the board to purchase devices to include K through second grade. We... I think this pandemic definitely exposed some of the inequities in our society. You really started to learn which children, which households didn't have technology, which didn't have Wi-Fi. And we... It may be things that we take for granted on a daily basis, but it really ended up exposing our most at-risk students.
I completely agree.
And as a district, we definitely realized that if we're gonna move to a much more technologically-dependent society, that we needed to make this decision to ensure that all our students had technology and with the hotspots, that they have access to the internet as well.
Yeah, I was actually watching, I think it was CBS 11 did like a week-long series of stories. And one of them was about a high school student that was in McKinney that was literally having to do her work off of a phone where she had her hotspot, and she had to kind of put it in the windowsill because she was kind of on the outskirts. So she didn't just have fast Wi-Fi, and she had to get it to her position just to be able to get on her computer to do her work. And I think that if you just assume that because everybody has phones, that everybody has really high-speed internet at home, and that is not at all the case.
You definitely had some parents that would take their children right outside of the school, be able to get a signal for their Wi-Fi devices.
Wow. You know, I didn't even think about that. But yeah, being able to go to the library and being able to go to places to actually get internet. People still have to do that. It's not just a given that everybody has really good internet at their houses. Even right now, we're doing a Zoom meeting. Well, you know, if you don't have great internet, this would be choppy. It would be up and, you know... Just something as simple as that makes all the difference. And if that's how we're learning, you have to be able to have those things. And, you know, one of the things that the Constitution of Texas does say is that public school does need to be equitable for all students. And I don't think that unless you have a child that is either at risk or that requires special needs, that you don't realize just how many programs that schools have to provide and need to provide to be able to accommodate students. So how are y'all dealing with some of the kids, maybe, that require special needs? How are y'all trying to kind of alter things to accommodate to that?
Those are conversations that are definitely taking place now. I know that a lot of people, a lot of teachers are brought to mention that are special education students. They're trying to figure out, how do we provide services through technology? So those are ongoing conversations. And then I know that with my experience and the teachers that I've talked to, that if we were to allow students on campus, that the most needy students would be our special education students just because they need that extra support. They would definitely need to be one of the first students, student groups to be back on campus.
Absolutely, absolutely. My daughter's school, they're gonna do, when they get into the classroom, because there are either deaf students or hard-of-hearing students, they're gonna have the face shields. And you don't even think about that. If your child doesn't have those needs, just to be able to see a teacher's face and be able to read her lips and, you know, to be able to learn, it's just so important. And there's just so much of that that's gonna be missed out on. And I know that... But it's important. It's important that we remember all of those things because that's what makes school so important to just society. That's why it's so important that we all get there as soon as we possibly can. I mean, it's just important.
And certain things that people don't take into consideration as well, what about our homeless students, right? For some of our homeless students, school is the absolute safest place to be. Sometimes, schools are the only place or the only meal of the day that students receive. What about parents that don't have transportation to pick up those meals? There's just... What about those students that are facing child abuse at home and that schools don't know about? More hours at home sometimes leads to putting that child in greater risk.
I was curious about that personally when all this started. You know, especially with people that are at home with abusive... Kids that are at home in abusive situations. How do y'all go about creating a safe environment for Zoom when it comes to... creating a safe environment for Zoom when it comes to, I mean, we're not all meant to look inside each other's houses at all points in time and see how all of us live, right? That's just not how we're designed to like to, so you're looking at all these kids. How do you deal with it when when you see something that is not appropriate? And which is going to happen, you know, is that even, is that a discussion that y'all have had and how have y'all tried to handle it?
That's, I personally haven't heard anything within our district just yet. Uh, but I I definitely can reference a, I think it was a school, it was either Georgia or Florida, where where the teacher, as they were zooming with the students, one student had what what would seem to appear a mounted weapon on the back wall. Uh, so the first thing the teacher did was call the authorities and it was a, it was a properly secured BB gun that that looked like a weapon and something that people may not even thinking think about at the time. Um, it it, these are, these are new challenges that we're gonna, that we're gonna face. And I and I think definitely if our teachers witness something that that is putting our students, something that uh if our students are in any form of danger, I think our teachers will definitely do the right thing and contact and and alert uh uh administration on campus and then we'll 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 submit those concerns to the appropriate authorities.
Oh, it's so scary to think, even think about, you know, and it's just, it it, or or, you know, when you're witnessing something in the background that you shouldn't be, or, you know, I don't know, it's, there's just so much about this that I think as is just gonna you know, make itself um evident as this goes on that ju- just how much school is designed to be in the class. I just can't say that enough. I'm a big proponent for it. I just feel like for kids, mental health and their and their overall learning, like, you know, just being in the class. But um, you know, one of the things, one of the things that kind of kicked off me wanting to talk to you was um, when I started looking at the Texas uh Health and uh Health and Human Services website that keeps track of all the demographics of the cases of COVID and then also the more the fatality rates. One thing that is incredibly evident is how much this is devastating the Latino community in the state. It's, I mean, half of of COVID fatalities um are from those within uh the Latino community and almost half of the cases. I don't know, you, I know that you're very involved with LULAC and you're very involved in that, you know, that that part of um the community. Why don't you talk to us a little bit about why you think that is and how we can kind of help? What do you think are some of the challenges um, you know, facing that particular community? How can we help them and and people that are uh maybe facing some communication or that, you know, maybe the communication of the the message might not be coming through as clearly or something like that? But I just, I really wanted to get your your opinion on that.
Some of the issues that that are that definitely are are impacting the Latino community on a much more prevalent basis is is number one is just the access to to healthcare and insurance. Um, in the Latino community, there is a a large portion that don't have that access to to health services and and the ability to to pay for those, one. Um, a huge portion of the Latino community, uh, their 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 jobs are are primarily focused on essential uh essential jobs within the community. So they are well, beginning with, they are the fastest-growing population in the state of Texas. Um, a large portion of that are are classified as essential workers. Um, so you're overly exposed, you're exposing them to your, to to more uh, to more risk uh of 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 COVID nineteen. Um, you have these multi-generational households, right, that like keeping the 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 family um from grandparents to the grandkids, uh, you you're 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 exposing more people within that household. So it's it's a, it's a number of factors that are that are greatly um causing these numbers to be a lot more more prevalent within the Latino community. Um, I I definitely think that there is a a shortage of communication of resources.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, language barriers is a huge one. If 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 as a community, as a city, as a state, are we putting out the 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 resources and are we communicating those effectively? Are we um, are we truly reaching out as 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 well as we can uh for for every single community? Um, have we placed? Have we, have we placed in locations that are are the are the greatest impacted by COVID nineteen? Are we passing out information? I think um the seriousness of the of the pandemic, um this is why as as an as an elected official, it's so important to to set the example and and if and and to model a good behavior. And I think some of our leadership has failed uh with taking this pandemic as serious as they should have been, uh, whether with the enforcement of masks. I think that um I I think we have, we've at least slowed down. Um, I think numbers were spiking in in July and and early August. Numbers were definitely spiking. And but I think that um, I'm hoping that that people continue to take this seriously and people continue to um, to take the nece- the the necessary precautions, uh, something as simple as putting on, putting on a mask. It's not about it's not about infringing on anybody's personal rights. It's about uh doing doing good by the community. Um, especially in in times like this. We've never experienced anything like this in our lifetime. And then I think just uh making sure that any services that that we provide, that it it's available to everybody and that we communicate in as many ways as possible.
Right. I definitely, you know, I I talked to um some people um that worked with, you know, with the nursing homes and then um just in various places within the city. And I definitely think that one of the things that was missed was conveying the seriousness of the pandemic to Spanish-speaking citizens. I don't know that they really understand. And I started thinking about it and I'm like, how are they getting this information? Where? Where are they getting it? Because we're adjusting it every day through social media and through websites and stuff. But where is that coming through to them? And then, you know, and as you see the numbers of the age ranges, it's it's pretty clear that this doesn't affect kids nearly like it does with the elderly population. And and one of the downsides of the multi-generational living is once that that age range gets it, that at-risk, that's, it's, it's just so devastating to them. Um, I mean, how do you even handle that? You know, like, how do you even portray that? And and I think about, you know, all these essential workers, there's a lot of these these workers that have never stopped working. They have not been on furlough. They've not been, you know, they've been working this whole time. Think about the janitorial staff at um a school. They they work the whole year. And uh, the gas station attendants and like all these people that have been doing, you know, essential work, it's just it's it's, it's it's definitely bringing up a lot of inequality, not only inequality, but just access to medical care and how some people are just so dependent on just that ten dollars an hour job. And they're at the most risk for everything that's going on. And it's 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 heartbreaking. And I think it's showing a lot of holes where there needs, we need to be filling those holes with with resources and things for for some of some of our most at-risk citizens, for sure.
Without a doubt. And that's, that's why I think that that the work that that nonprofit organizations are doing and making sure that that they are informing the the community um of of things that they come across, uh, whether it's COVID testing sites, whether it's uh the North Texas Food Bank um providing food periodically. And and definitely, I I know a lot of people have have uh have truly been helped by those efforts. Um, and and just just people seeing the need, where people see a need, excuse me, where people see a need, they fill the need. Other organizations that that have donated supplies. I know that that the YMCA, I'm gonna give a shout out to the YMCA and the Chamber of Commerce or and the other organizations that have put on supply drives as well. And I think one thing that broke my heart is just even after they ran out, there were so many people that still needed help.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that's, that's what truly breaks my heart. Um, but I I think that we have to pull together. We have to come together. We have to take this seriously. We have to take the necessary steps uh to protect ourselves, to protect those around us as well.
Absolutely. And you you kind of touched on a little bit about um the homeless population of students. And I don't even think Grand Prairie really understands how many students there are that actually and the way that it, we we do have a gr- we do have a nonprofit organization within the city. It's called Lifeline Shelters. And they actually do only service families who um are have students within the GPSD school district, uh, GPS is the Grand Prairie School District and uh that are considered homeless students. And that the way that they identify homeless within that organization is anybody that does not have a permanent address, because you don't realize how many students um are living in like night-to-night hotels, weekly hotels, um on relatives' couches, some of them in cars. Um, but there's, there's a tremendous amount of students that are dealing with this. And even lately, when you go through something like an like an economic um, you disruption like the pandemic has been, I can only imagine that that's that's increased. So um Lifeline is definitely something that y'all utilize as a huge tool within within the school district. I want to make sure people know that it exists because you can donate to it. Um, and it's specifically for students of Grand Prairie.
Now, please, please send me that information. I'll definitely make sure to to push that out as well.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure you know, you know, that's more for listeners, cuz I, you know, if you've never had to use those services. And the the reason that I know so much is because I was actually on um one of the commissions for the city and it was the uh the Community Improvement Commission. And so we worked with nonprofits within the city and kind of funneled federal money to them. And Lifeline was one of the biggest ones. And and the reason it exists is because it's it's tied to the school district. But you know, Susanna over at YMCA and Michelle over at the Chamber of Commerce, I mean, they're just tirelessly working. And y'all have, y'all do, elected officials in the city do have a lot of great resources within the people that work at these places, for sure.
And I definitely want to thank them too.
Mm-hmm.
And their, and their continued service to to the to our city.
Yeah, for sure. Um, one of the questions that I did have was um, um uh, but this is why I need to write it down whenever I'm in the middle of talking, cuz I just had a a great thing that I wanted to ask you and now I completely forgot. Oh, um, because you are involved with a lot of nonprofits. I just saw you the other night at the Lions Club. I know that you go to LULAC. Um, what are some, what are some places that people, like, what are some community organizations that you think that people should know about to get involved in if they really wanted to kind of help?
I'll 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 talk a little bit about my experience and how how I got involved with um, with the city of Grand Prairie. I I would say everything really truly took off for me in 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 twenty seventeen. Um, my my assistant principal at the time, um, as a history teacher, anything that's political related, politically related, or anything that's history-related, I I'm just a nerd for. So I knew, I know that when I, when I first came back, when I moved from College Station to Grand Prairie, I was, I was kind of trying to find my purpose. How do I get involved in the city? How do I get involved in my community? Uh, so I joined LULAC in in, I would say, early twenty seventeen, late twenty sixteen. And it was the, it was the, what I consider now, one of the just life-altering uh experiences that I've gone through. Um, I've I've been able to to get involved with the city on just about every single level of government. Um, whether it's keeping with updates regarding the 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 uh the the school district, uh, whether it's tabs with our our city councilman. Um, that's when I got uh when I was allowed to uh to serve on one of the boards. Um, I'm still still on the park board and working through the park board. Once I got involved, I got to know a whole other side of the city uh that I had no, that I that I didn't know about, uh, really provided opportunities to uh to continue to help out the community. And on the park board, I felt like it was my responsibility to promote what our city was doing. All the services, all the events that our city does. Um.
You picked a good one. That's a fun, that's a really fun board to be on. My dad was on that for a long time.
At at the time, I didn't know, I was, I was, oh, park board? No, I did. Now I I tell people it's the best, it's the best board to be a part of in the city of Grand Prairie.
Oh, for sure, yeah.
And I I think that with the, at the time, we we were opening the Epic uh Epic Waters, the Epic, the the Rec Center. There was just so much going on. That there was not a greater time to be a part of the of of the park board. Um, but definitely if there, if there's one thing that I've learned is that people in the city, we truly love our 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 community.
Mm-hmm.
And and are, there are so many people in Grand Prairie that are committed to to giving back in so many ways. And I think that's the, that's the beauty of our cities, that it does provide so many opportunities for everyone to get involved. Um, and just our city uh from the parks, from from all the events pre-COVID um that would, that we offer our citizens. We, this is truly a destination city um for families, for for just anyone that just in that wants, that is looking for a place to live in the metroplex. Um, but I I, there's, and it's just a great network. We have, we're, we're actually, Grand Prairie is like, is the fifteenth-largest city, but we have that whole, that small-town feeling where every knows each other. We all, we all know what we're about. And and we don't hesitate to reach out to somebody for help. Or if it's, if it's promoting a a service event, for sure.
People don't realize, and I say this as often as I can possibly say it, if you show up to a meeting for anything, I don't care if it's a nonprofit, if it's a, it's a school board meeting, whatever, someone will find something for you to be a part of. Like, that is just how it works. Just, people just don't show up. But if they did, I mean, they do show up. I'm just saying, when when people are at home, they just think, oh, there's too many people doing that already, or they don't need me, there's other people. No. In Grand Prairie, if you show up anywhere, you're going to be put into action to do something. Either be like a board member or to do, to immediately start volunteering. So if you want to get involved in the city of Grand Prairie in any capacity, all you have to do is say I'm willing. And I guarantee somebody will find something for you to do.
One hundred percent.
Man, and I'm so glad, I didn't even think about this, but you know, Christmas coming up in like three months, which is insane. Um, you know, I've never been more excited that we have a drive-through light experience. Cuz now maybe that won't be affected by COVID. Maybe we still get that going, cuz you don't have to get out of your cars to experience it.
You're right. The only thing that's gonna be impacted is the uh, when you, at the halfway point, that that's the thing that won't be available, but but Prairie Lights, it'll definitely be uh, we'll we'll continue to go on.
How do you think Halloween's gonna look this year?
Oh. Halloween is my favorite. October is my favorite month of the year. So I I don't know how, I don't, I don't even want to think about it yet. Just the, just the idea of canceling Halloween and haunted houses and fall weather and I'm I'm freaking out just thinking about it.
Oh, I guarantee there, there's no way you can cancel trick-or-treat. There might not be trunk-or-treats this year, but I guarantee there will be lines at every door in everybody's neighborhood. I I just can't imagine. And you know, when I think back to the eighties and some of the masks that we used to wear, and I'm like, man, we need to get those masks back. Those are probably pretty good little masks to have, even though you couldn't breathe in them. Like some of those plastic masks that we used to have. But I just think to myself, you know, trick-or-treat this year is gonna be totally, and it's on a Saturday, so I just anticipate there being a lot of activity on the streets then.
I can't wait.
Oh, my gosh, me neither. I just, I just am so ready for normalcy. I just am ready to to do all that. So um, so before we leave, so when are some of the next, like, how often do y'all have school board meetings that people wanted to watch? And are y'all still doing virtual? Are you in person yet? How are y'all doing that?
Where, there's definitely a time earlier in the summer where where board meetings were virtual.
Mm-hmm.
Say about April or May. Um, but then health regulations allowed uh with proper distancing and 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 wearing a mask. Um, we we have a a scheduled meeting once a month, and then we'll have periodic called meetings as uh throughout throughout the month as well. And um, it, I think it's, there's, there, what I've realized is that there's people that that are, that are consistently updated uh looking on the GPSD website to see when our meetings. Um, my focus, I I want, I I, my goal is for people to be more aware of when these meetings are taking place. Anytime we have a called meeting or a scheduled meeting, I I make sure to put that out because I want people to to get involved and to be informed of, to know what's going on uh within our school district.
Yeah, for sure. And it's, what is it? The, is it the first Thursday or the third? What is it?
Yeah, uh, it's either the second or third Thursday of the month.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's, that's right.
I think it's the second, second Thursday of the month.
Have y'all had a lot of attendance in the ones that you've had?
Uh, since since I swore in and June was packed, our that one was was, it was, it was kind of scary with with everything still going on and people trying to maintain spacing. But after that, it it hasn't been too packed. But that um, a lot of people have the option to to view um live uh on their, on their computers at home. And I think that that's definitely a good benefit. Um, and and a way for people to to keep updated with what's going on.
Yeah, for sure. Um, and school board meetings can be, you know, I I talked to Steve Pryor about this and um when I interviewed him. You know, they're, they're, they can be kind of long and, you know, there's a lot of business that needs to be taken care of. But um, you know, Steve, actually, I was talking to him about, cuz he'll do like a FaceTime, like a Facebook update of the, you know, at, like, kind of like a live tweet, which is so helpful because you get to see when when things change, like, okay, now we're on this topic, now we're on this topic. And I think sometimes it's kind of intimidating for people to watch like a three-hour meeting or two-hour meeting or however long, but to get some of the updates. Um, you know, and kind of utilizing technology for that has been, I love going through his comments, cuz I'm like, oh, I didn't even realize they were talking about this. Or I didn't even realize they were talking about that. And he doesn't usually do his opinion about it. It's just like, okay, now they're onto this topic. This has been suggested, this has been discussed, which is kind of nice.
I definitely appreciate Mr. Pryor, like, I, to kee- I used to keep up uh before I was a board member. Um, but he, it's def- that's, that's the kind of effort that we need to really make this more accessible to our community. Because a lot of people don't, our meetings, our meetings start at five-thirty uh behind closed doors, and then we we reconvene at seven. And those normally take about, go anywhere between two, two and a half, three hours. And a lot of people, um, I know their their first thought isn't, I want to sit through a three-hour meeting, right? Especially when you have kids at home. three-hour meeting, right? Especially when you have kids at home, when you, when you just came home from work and um you, you don't think, I want to attend a, a, a board meeting that long, right? Uh any, anything that we can do to, to make it more accessible. Um even the language barrier, right? Our Grand Prairie is about sixty-seven, sixty-nine percent uh La- Latino population, Spanish-speaking households, right? So now my, one of my goals is to, how are we uh, how are we translating this for, for, for those families that are primarily Spanish-speaking households? Um I think that, that's uh something that we have to definitely push forward as well.
Yeah, that's, when, when I said earlier that I, I had a question, that was what I was going to ask you about. Because one of the things about this podcast that actually I've thought about, and I didn't, I don't really know how to do it. But you know, like with you especially, you know, people, people like yourself that there needs to be, the, the Spanish-speaking community needs to hear those that are in leadership, especially that are representing, you know, the Latino community. And they need to hear from everybody, but I want them to be able to hear and understand the interviews that I have with you or like Loria Carrillo or, you know, Mike Del Boski and people that they know, but they can't even understand. And it breaks my heart. And I don't know, like, what it, how is that even addressed as far as translating? Are there, are there programs that you can do? How do, how do you do that within schools?
Within, within schools, I know in Dallas, um Dallas ISD, uh everything, every information that's put out needs to be translated in Spanish. Uh translators are always available. Definitely with proper planning, uh you bring in translators for PTA meetings uh to make sure that anybody that needs a headpiece, that they, that they have that availability. And I'm still learning everything that Grant, currently, I'm still learning everything that Grand Prairie is doing. But definitely my focus is how do we reduce that language barrier?
Right.
Do we, whether it's translating on, on my own social media, uh some of the information that the district puts out, if I can translate that and push that out, that's just one more way uh that, that are, that our families can get a hold of information. And I know that sometimes social media is the quickest way that people get their news and information on a daily basis. Right? So if we can push that on Facebook, if we can push that on Instagram, if we can push that on Twitter, uh now TikTok, right? However, we can push that. I'm still learning TikTok, by the way.
TikTok is really complicated. I don't think people realize how complicated it is to learn how to use that, that app. I've tried and there's classes now.
I, I need to take one of those classes because I'm, I'm hands with the amount of stuff that's available out there.
Man, I'm telling you, like, um as a real estate agent, they have TikTok. And you wouldn't think, because I guess, you know, just apps and technology in general, like TikTok, I, I just assumed was a music app. It's not. There's so many things you can do with it. I didn't realize that. But when I tried to use it, I was like, I have no idea even where to start with this. Like, how do people get, and, and I would call myself pretty techno, technology savvy, but I got on TikTok. I was like, this is a whole new thing I need to learn how to do.
Oh, without a doubt. I think uh I'm, I'm losing track of everything that's being put out there for sure.
Oh, my gosh. And like kids, just, just using kids and these students, I mean, it's just, I thought about, I thought about when I, when I wanted to put podcasts out, I'm like, how can I get this done to where people can hear it in both languages? I'm like, maybe I could find some kids from school that maybe are, you know, in Spanish and can do this as a project. Or, you know, utilizing some of the students to edit videos, edit, you know, audio for, for some of the interviews. I mean, I don't think people realize even in, how, how students, how much they're learning within schools, especially within some of the trades. Um, you know, that is going to help them be very successful. Editing, editing audio is a big deal. Everybody has podcasts. Everybody has videos. Everybody has that right now. So like having a student learn how to use that, you know, these, these twelve-year-olds are probably a lot better at it than most of the adults are.
I've, I've seen some creative edits by children, videos, audio, so many things. Things that, that I go in way over my head. Um but I, I think our, our kiddos definitely, at the rate that they're learning how to use technology and the programs that go along with it, makes me feel old, a lot older.
I know. And I try to tell people like, because they complain that their kids are watching YouTube. And they're watching like YouTube influencers and YouTube advertisers and all this stuff. And I'm like, okay, but I want you to think about how much time it takes to actually do this. Okay, you're sitting in front of your YouTube, your, your computer for however long. Then you got to go back and edit it. You got to get up every day, like, you know, and so I'm like, there's, there's value to it. It's not just a waste of time. These kids are learning, this is what they need to learn how to do. And um, and it requires a tremendous amount of patience to get on there and do a lot of technology, to, to do the editing, do the video, do the re-recording. Um, you know, so I, I give a lot of them a lot of props because it's not the easiest thing in the world for sure.
I, I am, I am no stranger going to YouTube. If there's something I can't figure out, probably, probably on there somehow.
Oh, yeah, for sure, for sure. Well, um, so what, is there any last, like, um comments or, or things that you want to maybe encourage some of the educators out there, some of the parents or the students about starting this, this next school year?
I, I think I ju, I just want teachers, parents in the community to know that in Grand Prairie, we, we have survived the first week. And it, it'll definitely take patience and grace on everybody's part. Everyone is learning. Every, this is a whole brand-new experience. We're pushing education to the future. Right? And it, and I want the community to know that it's not going to be perfect. I think, I, I think a lot of people expect a hundred percent customer satisfaction right off the bat, right? And although I wish things were, could run as smooth as, as, as possible, um what, what happens the day before the first day of school for, for students in Grand Prairie? We have a huge storm hit Dallas County. And, and I'm thinking, oh, my gosh, electricity is out. Wi-Fi is out. Could, could anything else go wrong right now? We're, 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 we're trying to push education to the future. We're trying to be more technologically dependent as a society. And and there's, there's always room for human error and just, just the unforeseen. So I know for teachers, it's, it's almost like year one again for so many teachers. Um, you're learning things that you never thought that you were going to have to rely on uh as, and switch over to as quickly as, as, as we've, as we've required our teachers to do so. For our parents, uh we understand that, that there are so many uh variables out there, that there are so many different situations going on. And I, and you're not alone. You're, you're not alone in how you feel. Um and as an administrator, um our job is, is to support our teachers, to make sure that they continue to take care of themselves and know that it's going to be okay, that we're going to make mistakes. But our job is, is to fix those mistakes and, 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 and learn as a community, learn. We're going to have to rely on each other more than we ever have. Um so um as, as a, as a school board member, my, my biggest responsibility is to make sure that, that I, that I hear the community out. That I, that I, that I, as, as an administrator, I know firsthand some of the struggles that our teachers uh and challenges that our teachers are facing. And as, as a community member, as a proud member of, of Grand Prairie, um I hear, I hear you. I'm here to, to, to communicate those concerns uh to, back to the school board and to our superintendent, that way that we can do everything that we can on our part to make sure that we are, we are as patient, as flexible as humanly possible.
I didn't even ask you, are you a dad yourself? Do you have kids in school?
I, I have, when people ask me that, how many kids I, I have, I tell them I have five hundred and forty kids. My elementary school. Um, not currently not a father, but I definitely have five hundred and, and, and fifty-plus kids in, in campus that I call my own and that I love very dearly. And I, and I, I just hope, I can't wait till this is all over, uh so I can see them again.
What about, are you, are you married?
Not married either.
So how have you been like on your damn time of which you probably don't have too much? How are you keeping yourself busy when nothing is open? Or what are you, what have you been doing?
I just, let me tell you, Netflix, I've had, I've relied too much. I've, I've probably spent more, too much, too much time on Netflix. Um I've actually, I, I, I know my, my, my schedule is, is crazy busy and I, I find just different ways to get involved. Um I, someone reached out, one of my good friends, uh reached out and, and told me about the, the Lions Club and and what they're about. And it's definitely something that I see myself aligning, aligning with. And it's just, it's just one more opportunity that I can provide uh services to students.
Yeah. And Lions Club will take you. Man, they are ready. They are ready to come have you there. Just anybody that wants to come.
Definitely. Um whether it was through the, the supply drive uh for the YMCA, that's, that's something I did before I got uh before I heard of the YMCA here in Grand Prairie doing it. Uh so I, I didn't hesitate to team up because um and anything that I can do to, to, to reduce the barriers that our students face. Um and I definitely send that invitation out to, to anyone that's, that, that's willing to, to help out as well.
Yes, for sure, for sure. And I'm going to tell you right now, I've never been a sports watcher. Like, I do, like, I do watch sports, but it's not, but I will, I have never seen why we need sports more than lately.
Let me tell you, Luca, man, that, that was amazing. Sports just.
Yeah, it's, and you know, it gets, sports gives people things to talk about that really are not important to life. I mean, it's not important that the Dallas Cowboys win or lose, or the Mavericks win or lose, or anything like that. But it's important to our psyche. And I've never really, I've never felt that more than lately. And I have a friend of mine who, um, he lives down in Dallas and he's like, I'm just glad that there's sports back on TV again. That's not just reruns, like things that I can actually watch, even if I can't go there and watch it. Like, it's, it's nice to have that, that distraction, you know?
Definitely. I, I'm a huge sports fan, whether it's Aggie football, Yankee baseball. Uh right now, the NBA playoffs, it's, 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 I, I, I'm just glad it's back. And I hope, I hope that, that it'll, that's here to stay, is I don't know if I can, sports going out again.
Yeah, I mean, you being an Aggie, so like, how are they doing? Are they, are they doing their season for football? How are they?
Right now, the S E C is still scheduled to, to, to go on. How that, how that happens, I, I don't know. I'm just, I'm fingers crossed that we play a full season.
Oh, gosh. It, it'd make me, it'd make me, nothing would make me smile more than to see college football back on, you know? And you know, when I thought about the state fair, because you know, you're from New York. I know, I know that you've lived here for a while. So I don't know if you ever had state fair as part of your childhood, you know, up there as we would down here. But when they canceled the state fair, it was heartbreaking. But then I've seen the lines online for the Fletcher's Corny Dog stand and I'm like, geez. People are just feening.
Yeah, it's, and that was definitely heartbreaking. Definitely, I don't, I don't, I don't recall any, anything like that in New York. Having something to look forward to every, every uh October. But uh, man, yeah, we gotta, we gotta find our uh, our uh state fair foods somehow, for sure.
Have you seen these lines?
I, I, I can, I can already imagine.
Three to four hours people are waiting.
I, I don't know if I can wait three to four hours for some food.
I, I personally wouldn't, but I mean, people are used to it. I guess every year they do it anyways. But there, but I was like, that is genius, showing up with a food, with a corny, a, a corny dog food truck and just putting it in the middle of neighborhoods. I'm like, genius, genius. Add a margarita stand in there and we're all set. We don't, we're just ready to go. But I'm just ready. I'm, I know, I know you are too. I know we're all just ready for this to kind of get back to some sort of normal and um even, you know, school. I know kids are even ready for that. So I'm just, I'm glad to have people like yourself that are willing to um, you know, do their public service and, and be elected officials. It's not easy doing that right now in a situation that we're all in this year. I know that's not the easiest thing. So, you know, thank you for, for doing that and uh, and for just, for just being there for these kids. And we really appreciate people like you. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much for that. Jenna, I appreciate you having me on. And any, 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 any way that I can help out, please, please don't hesitate to reach out.
So where else can people find you on social media if they wanted to follow things that you're doing?
Let's see what uh, I'm a, I, I literally, I think that was one thing about my campaign that I was just like, I feel like I have the social media advantage here. And I didn't realize how much it plays a part now in, in the election. Right? Uh so I made sure, make sure to follow Brian Parr for Grand Prairie ISD, School Board Trustee Place Two. Um on, on Instagram, you can find me on, let's see, it is under, I believe it's Brian for, for G P I S D. And Twitter, same thing, Brian for G P I S D.
Very good. And you are very active on your social media site. So, and you'll be shocked for people that are listening when you go on there to see how much he actually does during the week. It's, it's pretty, it's pretty impressive considering that you're a full-time working person and you are also on school board. And then you're also part of all these nonprofits. Like, you are doing something every day. I swear. You're, you're, you're just an active guy when it comes to that. So uh, well, thanks so much for being on. I really appreciate you taking the time.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Talk to you later, Brian.
Take care.